Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the April fourteenth, two thousand fourteen Board of the U forty-six District to order. It's six thirty-three. Let's go around the table and introduce ourselves, starting here on my left with Principal Reardon.
Robert Reardon, Principal Essex High School.
Gary Baker, Board Member, Town of Essex.
Brian Donahue, Board Member, Essex Junction.
Judith De Nova, Superintendent.
Jack Balandorf, Chairman from Essex Junction.
Al Bombardier, Representative from Essex Town.
Liz Supin, Board Member, Essex Town.
Erin Knox, Board Member, Essex Junction.
Al Travers, Director of Technology Essex.
Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and start with our mission statements and just do a little bit of preamble this evening, too. Our Essex High School Mission Statement, "Essex High School is a mission-driven and learning-centered community that believes, through both independent and collaborative engagement, everyone can develop excellence in their individual pursuits. We offer a rigorous and varied curriculum and believe in challenging students to think critically and act responsibly, compassionately, and respectfully. We foster intellectual curiosity and resourcefulness so that students can engage in their learning to achieve the behaviors, skills, and knowledge essential to becoming contributing members of their community and citizens of a diverse and ever-changing world." The Mission Statement for the Center Technology Essex provides us comprehensive technical programs for all students, which include career exploration, preparation, and technical literacy in a respectful learning environment. Students will have the opportunity to acquire skills necessary to reach their individual goals." Thank you. Secondly, before we hear Visitors to be Heard tonight, I also would like to welcome Liz Supin to our Board. Liz was recently elected from the Town of Essex to fill the seat that had been vacated by Ryan McLaren, whose term had come to an end. And Liz, we're glad to have you.
Thank you very much.
And we look forward to serving with you, and thank you for your service to your community.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We do have a visitor to be heard.
Next, we have Visitors to be Heard, and we have one visitor to be heard this evening.
Thank you very much. I don't know if you all can hear me. Maybe I should stand over here. Is this okay? I'm Joanne from Joanne Long Ignizuski. I'm from J.J. Motorcycle Safety Course. I understand that there was a board meeting in February that Ben had sent me an email to that went to an email account that was bugged. So I never realized that there was a meeting that I should attend in February. So that's why I was not here. And I also went through surgery in February, which went into an infection, which I never got to the Superintendent's office until last week, to be quite honest. And I have another surgery scheduled in May. So I'm not out of the woods yet, but I appreciate the fact that I can come and say a few words. I do understand that some ladies came and said that there was a noise issue. We were here in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. No noise issues. At the end of two thousand twelve, I fired an instructor who has friends, apparently, that live in this area. I did not realize that. In two thousand thirteen, all of a sudden, I'm being told there's a noise issue. So Robin Hull-Weedle of the Essex Junction Police Department or Essex Town, excuse me, you haven't combined yet. The Town of Essex Police Department went and checked it out. And he came back to me and Bruce Murdo of the Essex High School and said, "Listen, can she start later? Let's fix this." So we said, "Absolutely. We'll start at nine, nine-thirty, whatever will work for the people in the area." Because by that time, people are mowing their lawns, the bells are going off in the church. There's all kinds of people are, what I want to chain sawing. There's all kinds of noises going on. For our little motorcycles that we use, I wish I could have brought one here. They're little two-hundreds. If I were to put one on the other end of this room, you wouldn't hear it. They're so low. But what we did do last year for the very first time was we connected with the Essex Police, South Burlington Police, and we ran a pilot program for those types of individuals who really need this kind of learning on their motorcycles that they cannot get anywhere in the state of Vermont. I'm the first and only independent in the state of Vermont to be separate from the state. And so what we do is we're private. Even though we're an L-three-C, we follow the same rules as any five-oh-one-C-three would in the state of Vermont. We're not here to make money. That's not our mission. Our mission is to save lives. And we've done that of the fifty people we taught in three years out of Essex Junction. Because there's three dealerships in this area. There's Frank's Motorcycles in Essex Center. There's Land Air in Essex Junction over on Susie-Wilson Road. There's Green Mountain Harley on Main Street. And so all of those people have Essex Junction residents who are looking to take it in Essex Junction. Plus, I have two people who graduated from Essex High School. Plus, I grew up, I'm a fifth-generation Vermonter, not too far from the Essex line. I just couldn't go to Essex High School because all my friends went to Essex High School. I had to go to Burlington High School because my mother didn't want me to get in with my friends. Or I would have been one of your alumni. I wanted to be one of your alumni. So anyways, he told us that it was straightened out. Bruce told us it was straightened out. So we thought that everything was fine until you guys have a board meeting. And Denise calls me up and says, "Joanne, the Board has decided not to let you do it." And I said, "Well, she was. I thought we had resolved the noise issue last year. We were starting later. If there was any kind of issue, why didn't somebody get back to us to see what we could do?" Because it takes us two months to set this up through DMV. It's not like we just stop here. We have nowhere to go now for all these people from Essex that want to take it through us, that got to us last year, that are hoping to do it this year, that we may have to send them to Bristol because Mount Anthony, is it Mount? No, it's Mount Abe. That's right. Mount Abe down in Bristol, we've been using for seven years. So we're going to have to take those people from here down there. What I'm wondering, if there's any way to get at the bottom of the noise issue, is what I'd like to do. And if there isn't, how can I, or how can I plead on you to at least give me, at least give me three dates and one date for the police so that I can get out of here and get into somewhere else? Because just dropping me, I'm like at a loss as to where to go and what to do with these people from Essex, except to tell them that the Board has decided not to let us be in there. So I guess I'm pleading on you to find out, can we move to the other parking lot? You know, maybe that would be a better parking lot than this one would be as far as noise. I don't know. But I do know that one weekend, only one weekend, we did make noise. There were some big motorcycles out there. Yes, they ran for twenty minutes, and then we shut them off for fifteen minutes. We didn't start till nine. We took an hour or better for lunch, and we were done by three or so. But what we were trying to do was we were trying to help out the Essex Police. We're trying to bring them in something so that they're just not on these motorcycles without some kind of training besides the training they got at Norwich. We're trying to keep their training up. And the state can't do that for them. And your parking lot's the biggest parking lot to do it in with these big bikes. A small parking lot, there's not enough room. So regrettably, your parking lot is the only one in the area that suits this type of training that we do for them. And so I guess I'm pleading on you as an educational. Use us in your grants. You can do that. We are not just nationally certified as a motorcycle driver education course. We're state-certified. So you can use us in your grants. Mount Abe uses us in their grants. Because we also, we put out for you guys, anybody in the school can take our course, faculty and staff included, for only the price of the insurance, which is like thirty dollars. And it's like a hundred-and-eighty-dollar course. So we try to do everything we can, you know what I'm saying, to make this work out. And we're hoping we can still try to make it work out. And we're hoping that what's going on with this noise situation is an actual real situation and not one that's been created because we've fired someone. Let's see here. Okay, I told you about that. I told you about that. I just want to make sure that I cover everything. Oh, it was John Chester Fitzgerald, I was told, to say, that I was only looking for fairness. Apparently, he was a school board person forever and ever and ever. And so he said, "Well, Joanne, just go in there and tell him that. You're just looking for fairness." Okay. And I was looking back through thirteen, ten, eleven, I mean, and twelve. I mean, we're only holding six classes here. And most of them are not on just a Saturday and a Sunday. They're on a Saturday one weekend and a Saturday the following weekend. So sometimes it's not just a Saturday and a Sunday. And again, we start at nine, we go for twenty minutes, we take ten minutes off, we take an hour for lunch, and we're out of here by three. We try not to make issues because we do understand there can be issues. Because motorcycle driver ed is in the beginning of sort of like motor vehicle driver ed. But we don't have an open road to do it on. And the state of Vermont's not going to give me a parking lot. I'm told to rely upon the schools. Well, there's only a few schools that are big enough to do this kind of what we do on. But we're private. We only put eight people in class. We don't put twelve people in class like the state of Vermont does. There's only eight students out here. It's one-on-one. We want people to be on the highway that know what they're doing. I've been riding for forty-three years. I've been an instructor for twenty years. I even instruct the instructors to instruct. I've been riding for forty-three years. I've never had an accident. I'm cautious, and that's how I teach my people. So what I'm going to do is, I told you we taught fifty people here. Okay, let's see. And I've given you the background that I have two people that worked for me that went to Essex Junction High School. And I'm really trying to do it as a community service for Essex Junction and the small surrounding areas. What I did was I thought this might be helpful to you. I only have six of them. These are the books that we use, the student workbooks. I thought you might want to look at them so that you can see or if you need anything for grant information. And I've also left one of our cards on the outside. I put our Mission Statement in here. And I've also given you some, we have some course completion questionnaires. I've given you four of them of the people who take our courses, people especially from Essex, so you can see what they think about the course. So here's one, two, three, four, five, six. I don't know how you want to hand those out. But I guess that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking to see if I can get a minimum of four dates, if that's at all possible, so that I can hunt for somewhere else or ask you if we can go into the other parking lot or see if we can investigate to find out what really is the noise issue? Was it that one weekend that we did have all those bikes out there? I'm not going to lie, they were noisy. But we really, we really felt that we were doing something important for the Essex Police, and that's what we really wanted to do, was to do something for the community, to be quite honest with you. Because we're uncommunity-oriented.
Well, thank you, Ms. Ignizuski. I appreciate your compassionate plea this evening. Again, this is a chance for the public to be heard. This is, we're not taking any decision. We won't this evening on this. It's not part of our warned agenda, so therefore, you know, this is a topic that would have to be discussed in an open session, which all parties haven't been informed this is going on. So we need to add this to our topic for us to have further discussion, if that's the will of the Board to hear this. But thank you for your information and...
Do you know when your next board meeting is? Because I have to have surgery on May thirteenth, and I really would like to be here.
Our next board meeting?
I mean, if we can put it on the next board meeting, and my issue is...
May nineteenth.
Is it the nineteenth?
May nineteenth.
Yes.
Well, that ought to be okay if I have my surgery on the thirteenth. I also have a concern that the Essex Police are jumping all over me to find out if I'm going to hold this in July. And so if you can't make a decision, then I guess I have to tell them I can't give them a decision, that they're going to have to wait, and I don't know if they'll be able to do it this year or not. Because they need at least two months to set it up because they have to go through their, you know, the police department and set it up. So I don't know if I do, if I come back in May, I don't know if that'll give them enough time to be able to do it in July. I just don't know.
Do we, yes, do...
I gave it to Ben the other day.
And it doesn't work still?
It doesn't work.
No. So I was just, thank you for saying that. I was just going to ask you if you could...
Write it again, maybe on the Visitors to be Heard paper.
Well, what I'm going to do is go back and check it out, though, because I processed it off on there. That's our old one. And then I gave Ben a new one. It was jjmotorcylclesafety@google.com. It was just two Js, motorcycle safety@google.com.
Google or gmail dot com?
Oh, maybe that's what I gave him wrong. Is it Google? Is Google Gmail?
Yeah.
Okay, then that's what I gave him wrong. I gave him Google. It should have said gmail dot com. That's my mistake.
Is this an accurate phone number that's on the card?
Yes, that phone number's fine. Yes, that email just went belly up on us towards the end of January, February. It just, it got infected, and that's what happened. So that's why I couldn't be here in February, and March you didn't hold one, so I kind of ran as fast as I could for this one. Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to be in the next one if I could.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next on our agenda is our annual Board Reorganization topic. We have several items that we need to take care of, including election of the Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk, reemployment to task teams, appointment of legal counsel, set monthly meetings, authorize superintendent to accept and administer fund, external grants and funds, grant authority to pay bills, establish a newspaper of record, acceptance of the V S B A, Board Member Code of Conduct, affirm our annual meeting minutes, and identify an annual planning day. What I'd like to do is entertain any options or any nominations for Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Clerk.
Jack, I'll nominate yourself as Chairman. And would you like me to just do that separately?
Sure. No, we can do all three in one.
So I'd like to nominate you for Chairman, Brian Donahue as Vice Chairman, and Liz Supin as Clerk.
So we have a motion and a second for Jack Balandorf as Chairman, Brian Donahue as Vice Chair, and Liz Supin as Clerk. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Clerk say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six-nil. Also, what I'd like to do for the, thank you for that, Erin. The appointment of members to task teams, we've, what we've done in the past is given a, the Board has given authority to the Chairman to make assignments to the task teams, of which I have sent an email out earlier to all members. And for the record, I'd be willing to go through that. But it might be easier to have, just say, do we accept the Chairman's recommendation for assignment to task teams? If someone could make that nomination.
So moved.
Moved by Al. Do we have a second? Second by Gary. For discussion, I just, and to read this into the record. The service, representatives to serve on the C C S U Board would be myself, Brian Donahue, and Al Bombardier. Communications Committee members would be Al and Gary and Liz. Policy would be Gary and Brian. Negotiations would be myself and Erin. And leaders at work would be Al and myself. Our lead for our appreciative inquiry, visioning work would be Brian, and Liz would be supporting in that endeavor. And then just some specialty things that U forty-six would serve. Al is in terms of our information technology liaison, Brian to serve on the C T E Board, and Erin to serve on the N E A S K, or it's the N E A S K Board. So we've had a motion and a second to accept these appointments. That's what those appointments are. I think everyone had received an email to that effect. All in favor of those appointments, say aye. All in favor of having the Chairman make those appointments, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six-nil. Thank you for that. We also have some regulatory requirements that we have to do. Let me get to the proper page here. For our, for the record, we have to have a, where did I go? Sorry, I'm stammering here, but you've got to have a newspaper of record. We have to have a...
Page three of your orgs.
It's on page three of the orgs. Yeah, appointment of legal counsel setting the monthly meetings. Do we have a motion to accept the firm of Wells and Leopold to represent the district? Motion by Al. Do we have a second? Second by Erin. Liz, are we going too fast for you? Are you okay?
No, I'm good.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Wells and Leopold will represent us this upcoming year. Second item to set our monthly meetings, we typically have been scheduled for the third Monday of the month, starting at six-thirty. Just an affirmation that that's the schedule that we would like to do. We don't have to nominate that. Of course, we will schedule accordingly and as required, but that's notionally when we will have our meetings is the third Monday of the month. Do we have a motion to authorize the Superintendent to accept and administer external grants and funds? And grant, moved by Al. Second by Brian. All in favor, say aye. 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 Opposed? That motion passes six to zero. Do we have a motion for the Superintendent or her designate to be granted authority to pay the bills?
So moved.
Moved by Al. Second by Erin. All in favor, say aye. All aye. Opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Our sole option for establishing a newspaper of record is the Burlington Free Press. I don't think this, this is just an assignment. There's, since there's no choice there, we'll just assign the Burlington Free Press as our newspaper of record. We have, the School Board Association recommends our V S B A Code of Conduct, which was included in the Org notes tonight. We recommend that the, each member review that and sign it. I have copies here this evening for that, but I think it would make sense for us to accept that. Actually, should I read into the record what the Code of Ethics are? I'll take a couple minutes and just read it so everyone knows, including our viewers out there, what we're committing ourselves to do. Okay? Thank you. Superintendent De Nova. The Vermont Code of Ethics for School Board Members. As a member of my local school board, I will remember that my primary concerns must be the educational welfare of the students in my district and excellent return on investments for taxpayers. I agree to conduct myself in accordance with the following commitments. I will act within the scope of my official role through recognizing that a board member's responsibility is to see that schools are well-run, but not to run them. Act only as a member of the Board and not assume any individual authority when the Board is not in session unless otherwise directed by the Board. Give no directives as an individual Board Member to any school administrator or employee, either publicly or privately. Making commitments, avoid making commitments that may compromise the decision-making ability of the Board or administrators. Uphold the highest ethical standards, meaning not to receive anything of value by contract or otherwise from the school district or supervised reunion unless it is received, A, as a result of a contract accepted after a public bid, B, in public recognition of service or achievement, or C, as a board stipend, reimbursement, or expense allowed or by law for official duties performed as a member of such Board. Not to solicit or receive directly or indirectly any gift or compensation in return for a recommendation or casting a vote. Agree to recuse or remove myself from Board deliberation and when votes when necessary to avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest. Not agree to the hiring of a Superintendent, Principal, or Teacher already under contract with another school district unless assurance is first secured from the proper authority that the person can be released from his or her contract. Respect my peers, my constituents, and confidentiality considerations. Voice opinions respectfully and treat with respect other Board Members, administrators, school staff, and members of the public. Maintain confidentiality of information and discussion conducted in executive session and uphold applicable laws with respect to the confidentiality of student and employee information. Attend all regularly scheduled Board meetings insofar as possible. I agree to abide by the principles outlined in this Code of Ethics and will do everything in my power to work as a productive member of the leadership team. I don't know if we actually need to make a motion for this, but this is a pledge that each of us make as an individual, so we can distribute these up, we can sign them and return them back to the Superintendent. Is that, would that be fine?
Perfect.
We received earlier today an email through the Superintendent's office on the annual meeting minutes that were conducted last Monday, the sixth, the seventh of, I should, I should, I should read it. It's written right there. The seventh of April. I'm trusting that you've had a chance to read these. And just looking for an, we, by statute, we must affirm that these are meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to affirm these meeting minutes from our annual meeting of the seventh of April? Motion by Al. Do we have a second? Second by Gary. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six-nil. And finally, identify an annual planning day. It had a planning day scheduled for June eighteenth. The new news on that, because of some of our scheduling calendar items, that Essex High School is still in session that day. Is there, before we put anything to a motion here on this, is there Superintendent De Nova or Principal Reardon or Director Travers, is there any reason why? Well, were the pros and cons of having it on a day that school is in session? Maybe that's what I'd like to hear.
And the time of planning day was to begin at...
Twelve to eight.
Twelve to eight.
Noon till eight, yeah.
Located at B P R again this year, so it's twelve to eight, and it's off-site.
I mean, it's still in play, but I've got a reserve.
I mean, it's still in play, but I've, I've got a reserve. Do you still want to go ahead with that?
That, that's a Wednesday and because of the two snow days, excuse me, it's a banana don, those are in-service or professional development days. Which would, teachers would be, um, released from that work around two forty-five in the afternoon. At the same time, there are some groups that have done some flexing service time already for common core purposes. And so not all the faculty will be in the building on the eighteenth. A majority will be in the building. No students will be in the building on the eighteenth.
Is, is a possibility I might have to be in Rochester, New York? Cause I think, I think we were leaving on Tuesday for a family get-together out there. I gotta go back and check my calendar, but that might be a conflict. Uh, it's the first I've heard of that date.
It's been, we've had that one for a while.
I didn't recall that date.
I, I thought that perhaps it was, uh, Principal Riordan and Principal Travers needed to come like an hour later or two hours later and the board could have time dedicated for just work that you want to focus in on as far as how we structure it, how we structure that time together. If you were fine with principals being later, coming in an hour or two later, uh, I think the date could work.
I, I could be there by one. If that works for you.
Each teacher's last day is, that Tuesday.
So you're not impacted.
If I could make a quick call, I could confirm or not. If you only take me a minute. Cause my daughter, my daughter just came in from Rochester and she's at the house. Excuse me.
As, as Al is going to confirm that date or not, um, I mean, we really do need to, to set, set this date and, or, set a date of which June eighteenth has been the one that's been talked about and previously established.
I just have a little preview of this.
That's fine. Yep.
And this is based on previous couple of years? Cause I wasn't aware, I mean, I'm, I'm aware now of what we had, but I didn't know that we were in discussions of what would be the best date for that day. I mean, I didn't just go on the assumption that we're gonna do it the same time every year. I think that's a good assumption, but. So, oh, okay, so that's when we're doing it, that could be a problem, but I could try to, um, if we, yeah, like I might be able to.
Okay. We have not, we've not set an agenda yet as to what's gonna happen in that timeframe and I certainly, that would allow us some flexibility uh, for our, uh, teachers, staff, principals, and administration to, you know, we can accommodate, you know, what happens in that timeframe so that we can give that some utility out of, out of having everyone there, but.
That date is good to go. We leave on the nineteenth.
So that date is good to go. So, um, do we have a motion to accept that planning day for Wednesday, June eighteenth?
So moved.
Moved by Al. Do we have a second? Aaron, Aaron will second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion pa- passes six nil. We, we need to do some work though on what the agenda will be. Again, there, in, in the past, we've done our board self-assessment survey as part of that. Uh, I think there's some appreciative inquiry work that we want to get done in that, in that timeframe. There may be some board training topics that we, we want to address. I, I think it could be a, a full day for us. I mean, I'd say a full eight hours, so.
Jack, I was wondering if we can also incorporate, um, some time to maybe set maybe one, two, three very specific, specific goals for the upcoming year.
Priorities, yeah. I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back and address that very topic, but, um, because I'm, I'm, uh, that almost may be too late for us to establish.
That's a good point.
Uh, to establish those, those, those types of goals. And I'll get to that when we talk about our, our task teams, but I, I think, I think we should, should certainly be in a position to, um, affirm what those goals are at that timeframe. So. Okay, so June eighteenth it is. With agenda to be finalized to a later date. Certainly sometime no later than our next board meeting, which is?
May nineteenth.
May nineteenth.
So I can block out time. Would, would you expect us to be there earlier or later or?
What I would expect is you guys come back and tell me what works for you, okay? Um, uh, cause we, we certainly can accommodate your, your schedules around that. Okay, plus Brian, you have some thoughts on that or?
No, I guess I just wanted to tease out how you see what's your, what, how do you envision the agenda coming together between now and May nineteenth?
So, a good question. Don't know if I have a good answer. So rather than say something I may regret later, I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Do you want to chart?
I would certainly, I would certainly welcome input as to things that should be done. This certainly isn't a unilateral, uh, decision. Uh, it's, it's collaborative, you know, we, we know as a board what our strengths and what our weaknesses are, at least our own individual perceives strengths and weaknesses. We know we've made a commitment to our visioning process that I, I believe needs to be part of what our agenda is. I think there's some, um, regulatory issues that need to be discussed, uh, that, that will have some implication at one fifty-three, et cetera, how that, how that's school choices, supervisory union consolidation, kind of getting everybody up to speed on where are those to, I, I, I think all of that will be, will be topics for discussion plus anything else the board wants to, uh, have done. So anyway, but that's not the agenda, okay? Just making clear. I think, uh, what I would, what I'd appreciate would be, what are things that you as board members and Superintendent De Nova through your office, uh, things that you believe that administration would like us to be trained on and will school, will set things appropriately.
So do you want us to send you some thoughts?
Yeah, send it to me. I'll, I'll take, I'll take the role in, in, in getting that, but I want to do it collaboratively.
Could we, um, do you, do you think, um, Ben, using our, our sort of newfound technology, do you think Ben could set up a shared Google document where we could begin to sort of collect in a stream of consciousness different ideas?
We can definitely have a place on the board site under U forty-six, we can call it annual planning day. And not only could you do that, but I could also post the annual, um, self-assessment survey that we do. And that way, if we were to do that during the month of May, that would give Jack time to collate the results, which he does annually. So I think the timeframe of, uh, that assessment would be helpful as well. So, um, both a place to collect suggestions for how to use the time and then to complete this board self-assessment would be a good place to put that information where it's accessible by everyone.
Uh, my, my thought in that is that it, as we brainstorm, we may actually be doing some agenda planning for May. Uh, that's why if I, that as we come up, we, we start to raise some sort of top-level topics that we want to be addressing. It's not that they need to be waiting for some magic day.
Right.
Then we may find that there are issues that we want to start to understand better or so forth, so. And, um, there was quite a bit of success in that kind of Google Doc share with the policy committee and it just seems like we can keep pushing out of necessity. It's gonna be clumsy, but, you know, whenever you have necessity to kind of push technology, it makes it a lot better than training. It's always seems like it's kind of just a fool's errand. You know, when you have necessity, it seems to be a little bit more, um, functional.
And on the site is a board calendar so that you see all of your dates for the entire year laid out for you. So, you know, the more familiar you can get with that site, the better access you'll have to that information on an updated basis. And when you come in for your orientation, Liz will take you through that site and get you a password to it.
Okay.
That still has to happen, so.
So, so, uh, Superintendent De Nova, if, if you could have, you know,
Ben set it.
Ben, Ben set something up there. We, we, I, I like that idea. Thank you for reminding me of that, Brian, to use our Google Doc site as, as a repository of data collection. We all can make inputs into it and, uh, we can all see what, what everyone's putting in, which is exactly the way and it should be done. We can collaborate, uh, virtually if not in reality on making this happen, so, okay? All right. Anyth- anything else about the annual planning day? Glad we got it established for the eighteenth. Next on the agenda, our, uh, annual meeting vote review for, uh, again, the, the annual meeting occurred last Monday night. We were s- second after the prudential committee kicked off. We have the, we had just affirmed the, the quick meeting minutes of what occurred there. I would say, uh, thank you again Superintendent De Nova for you and your staff's work in helping pull that, pull that event together for the work that you did and, and helping create the presentations that we had and, uh, and just open the floor to comments from board members about annual meeting. Anything special, noteworthy?
For the annual meeting?
For the annual meeting, correct.
Cookies were great, uh, cookies were great. But I'm still concerned about the, the turnout. I think we've got to do something to try to encourage turnout.
Yeah, the Essex, um, the, the Monday night event, I, we actually had pretty good numbers. Was more than I've seen in the last few years, so that was encouraging. We asked some good questions. So there was some, definitely some engagement.
Right. There were some different people there too, I think.
Yes, I thought that was nice to see, you know, some different faces and it was nice to see the same faces too, but. Someone said they took a head count. Was it like, was it like twenty or twenty-two people? It was more than, or no, actually, I think it was more at one point. I think some people left.
Twenty-seven.
How many was it?
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, okay.
So it was more than.
Was it, it was like, was it two years ago that we only had seven?
Yeah.
So.
Triple the numbers.
As a percentage, it's.
I know, um, George Tyler, um, connected with me and they, they're struggling, you know, with the annual village meeting as well. Um, they offered a community dinner this year, um, to encourage participation and.
But it was a combined village and town administrative meeting. So it was two meetings and one plus the dinner. What a deal.
And, uh, and I think it was at that meeting, um, that a citizen stood up and said, I have this annual report from the U forty-six board, I have this annual report from the E J K A. I have this annual village report and I have this. And I, I can't assimilate it in the way you're doing business right now and the way you're structured and, you know, I think when citizens come forward and they tell us, um, the way we do budgeting is different. The way we publicize our information is different. And I, I think that's a direct, uh, connection to why people don't come because it's, it's hard to follow it and understand it. So George was talking with his, um, trustees about exploring an option as far as, um, considering maybe a Saturday, um, and doing it all together. So I, I said I would bring that, um, suggestion to P C, which I did last week and to you as well and if that's a, something you want to talk about as far as changing, um, the way we do it. You know, I can take it back and put some wheels in motion around that, but it's something for you to talk about, not necessarily tonight. I just wanted to plant the sugge- share the suggestion.
I personally, I, I think that would be great.
I do too.
I think that would be great. That's just my.
It would be good if you brought together in a true integrated fashion. If it's just, I'm gonna talk, then I'm gonna talk, then I'm gonna talk, and it's four and a half hours and no one's gonna come. But if you can still integrate as in almost, I don't know, panel-like or something, rather than four separate entities, then I think it'd work. Otherwise, I think it'd just put more burden on, just sit there for longer, take your time.
Yeah.
It'll change, change the format too.
Yeah.
The municipal, they, by law, they can vote on money issues.
Yeah, it's tough.
And with the school, we can't.
Right. Not on money issues, but we all have articles we can vote on from the floor like we did.
Yeah, but they can't, but with the school, they can't be of anything of money.
Of any financial, right.
Which, you know, really, I think makes it hard. Is it, you know, it's the, it's the all-star game. What's it mean? You know, it's the, it, it, what's at stake? And I, I think it's a little bit like you're teasing out in Westford is, moving to Australian ballot is, what does that town meeting mean now? Somehow I feel like to tease it out to, to get that, to get that group there, we, there needs to be, you know, why do you need my time? What's the value proposition? What's, what's it in, what's, what's in it for me and what, what is in it for you for me to invest my time? Um, and boy, those annual meetings, they're, they're not, there's not much. You know, it's the night before the vote. It's not always the best time to, for information, communication anyways. Um, there's nothing really at stake. So I, it's interesting to think at once, but it, but in many ways, it could agitate even further the idea that there are no money issues. We are very fundamentally different budgets. They're a line item budget. We're an appropriations budget. You know, so we, we are, it's horses and zebras to start off with. So I, I think it would be interesting to just, I love thinking differently. But as we think differently, I think it's a matter of like really ki- kind of kicking it around.
I, I do think it's hard for, um, especially when you talk about the school budgets, like, you know, parents with kid, smaller kids, you know, to, to, to do a Monday night. I do think even like if we did have to keep them separate, but maybe a Saturday would be helpful, um, for some people to be able to go. You know, cause you kind of have the, a Monday night is tough for a lot of people and the vote is the next day, so I don't know. But I do, I do think it might be interesting to even try maybe a different day of the week.
I mean, I, I talked to somebody when I was meeting the polls and their, their question was, I'm just so surprised in this community how few people care.
Right.
And I said, you know, it could be the other way.
I think that.
And it could be that in this community, people are really kind of pushed beyond their capacities caring. That they're coaching and that they're caring for people and they're, that there's, that they have a lot of commitments. It, it's not like people are necessarily doing nothing. You know, so people are making some choices. But it always feels like when you're the person that has the empty room, you assume that, you know, people are doing nothing if they're not in your room.
But then the budget passes and the people are just not coming because they say, I'm gonna support this budget. I trust the people I've elected and I'm gonna support it. This would be a different conversation if our budgets hadn't passed.
Yeah.
And the room was empty. This is an, for me personally, I've often said, I'm gonna support the budget. I don't need to be at the informational meeting the night before. If there were a series of meetings that led up to that, so I was better informed on the day of the vote, the night before, I've already decided. I trust my elected officials and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna support the budget. A lot of people in this community are in that situation.
I, I think for me, the actual roll counts are what I look at. I look at the data. And this margin for the high school is a little concerning because it dipped, uh, from a higher percentage. I don't have the exact numbers from the previous years, but this year was fifty-eight percent approval. So that's, that's concerning.
I'm sorry, what is that number?
Fifty-eight percent.
Fifty-eight percent approval. Forty-two percent were no's on the high school budget alone. The other articles passed by wider margins, but that's a little tighter than what I remember from previous years. I think one thing, two things that we could do to alleviate that. One suggestion I would have is the extra three percent that we're collecting. And I don't know if we can say we're collecting it or not, but there's a, it's not gonna be, the tax rate at the state, property tax, went down by three percent, three cents, three cents on the dollar. So I don't know why, as a matter of good faith, we shouldn't reserve those funds in a separate. Can we reserve those funds in a separate account?
It'll just be calculated by the rate.
Yeah, the tax rate gets set actually.
Right.
Okay, so it'll, it'll be transparent.
Right.
But the other thing was, I was thinking, we published on the card the budget increase, but not the tax increase. And the Essex Town Board went nine yards to show the budget increase year to year, but also that there was a very high tax increase and explained that to the public. So I wish we had more space on the card to have some words about what was going on there. But it's a shift and as more of taxpayers get the bills next September, October, the next vote might be a little harder. That's just a red, kind of a red flag for me and thinking, trying to think ahead, still what we can do. Just a thought.
I would just close by saying, for me, I think it's an opportunity for consideration because if we appreciate what the concern is from our citizens and we could find a way to come together in a different format, maybe we can begin the conversation of why do we stay structured the way we stay? And that might be a bigger question, because we see how difficult it is to interpret the information. And maybe it's time to have those conversations again. Actually, H eight eight three is, you know, requiring us to think about that now. And this board, quite honestly, is a classic shining example of what a union school board, how a union school board operates and the exemplary educational opportunities you provide all students of Essex and beyond. So it might just be that opportunity for people to have some confidence that we could structure differently if we could have the will to do so.
I had one comment on the voting process in and of itself, and it was because I was at Park Street the evening that they, they counted the ballots. And as you know, U forty-six is unique in that, you know, when we vote, our voters of Essex Town vote and the Village votes and they have the automatic vote counters. But for U forty-six, we have the paper ballots then that get combingled and then we have to count manually and which is, having observed this process for about four years straight now, is our vote counters are diligent, but there's, it's fraught with human error that can be introduced in the way we conduct our voting. And Steve McQueen, who was one of the vote counters that evening, had recommended that U forty-six consider doing voting through an automatic voting machines, just like what we do for our Essex Town School District and the Prudential Committee votes also. I don't know what that entails. I would fully be supportive of that. The votes would be counted quicker and perhaps more accurately. But it's something that I think our, the Board of Elections who counts the ballots would support. I certainly would support doing that. I think, you know, to me, it manifested itself the next morning when I got up and read the newspaper. The ballots passed, the school district, Essex Town School District passed, Essex Junction School District passed, but no results from U forty-six. Well, it's because we're manually counting until ten, ten-thirty, eleven o'clock at night and there's no reason for that. So I don't know Superintendent De Nova, how we go off and consider that, but it's something I think we could do to better serve our community.
I think the motion has to be presented at the annual meeting and approved, and then the following year.
I think you may be right. It's a charter change.
It has, might be with a change in moving to a Saturday for annual meeting.
We can explore, you know, and get more information if there's a will and interest.
All right. Thank you. Any other annual meeting vote review comments?
I mean, in my opinion, at fifty-eight percent in light of this year, I saw it as a huge wave of support. And the over sixty percent, low sixty percent in the capital side, again, tells me that we should be gauging our capital based upon our needs and not based upon some limiter of some magic one percent. I mean, that was, I was there at the genesis of one percent and it was just so arbitrary how Roger Derby and I chose one percent. It was really, it was really intended to just say, "We're at zero now?" So why don't we, why don't we try to get the nose of the camel in a little bit? We've got this massive capital physical plan.
Yeah.
And we should have some kind of savings account, some kind of working towards it. So let's start with one percent. I mean, it wasn't really intended to think that one percent a year was gonna, gonna be the end-all, be-all. And we know it isn't, not with rooms going and other infrastructure. So I think that's something for us to maybe consider as we keep going forward.
The other, one last point I will move on to is, is when you look at our combined towns, at Town of Essex and Village of Essex Junction and those communities that U forty-six serves, but also the school districts that serve those communities. Essex Town's school budget was twenty million approximately.
Somewhere between nineteen and twenty million, yeah.
Twenty, twenty million for Essex Town. It was close to eighteen million for Prudential Committee. We have twenty-three million for high school and another eight and a half million for CTE. I mean, we're talking well over sixty-five million dollars of educational funding that this community has voted and approved for us to invest in our, in our students. And I think there's a lot to be proud, there's a lot of pride that we can take in that, that we live in a community that is putting their money where their mouth is, you know, quite literally and has the trust and the confidence in many different boards, in the supervisory union and Essex Town School District to spend that money and entrust their students to us, to educate them to the best of our abilities. And for that, I'm thankful for the community that they recognize that. You know, we don't have to look very far to see other, other towns that have other issues with getting school, school budgets passed. And I'm very thankful that we have the students, the parents, the administrators, the teachers and the boards that can make this happen. I mean, that's a heck of a lot of money.
Yes.
That this community is investing in its students. Thank you. Okay, the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen U forty-six calendar is included in the, in the org notes. And actually Superintendent De Nova, maybe you can take us through things that you would want to point out to us on this.
I will, and I apologize in advance. I just realized the Center for Technology Essex calendar was not included. I do have a copy with me and I can maybe just highlight where they're the same and where. It's, it's very close. I have to say, as always, I've been really impressed with how our principals have had this conversation with their faculties and staffs. And actually, they're bringing forward a calendar this year that is more aligned with Essex Town than it ever has been. And I think that speaks to the desire for our community to be united in ways where one system's not in school, when the other's out and vice versa. Essex High School is going to start a day earlier with their faculty and staff on the twentieth of August. Rather than that, everything is the same with some evening conferences on October sixteenth after a half day for Essex High School. November twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth will be professional development days across the communities. There'll be two complete weeks of vacation at the end of December, from December twenty-second through January second, which is a remnant of Calendar two oh. The nineteenth of January will be a professional development day for both schools. Probably the biggest change is February vacation and it will be one week, the twenty-third to the twenty-seventh. All students will return throughout our supervisory union and Essex Town. On March second will be a student day. That's a significant shift. And I, I think that people had earnest conversations about March second and third being better instructional days than June, later in June. So I appreciate the principals having the conversations across our SU and aligning with Essex Town with that decision. April vacation will be the same as it typically is, the twentieth to the twenty-fourth. The twenty-fifth is Memorial Day. And there's the eleventh and twelfth of June for CTE PD time and the twelfth for Essex High School for PD. I can answer any questions. CTE has a few exceptions. They have Recognition Night and they have National Honor Society and CTE Admissions Day, very unique to the center where they structure some of their PD time in there. And I'm, again, apologizing, can send this via email to you tomorrow. I don't know if Bob or Rob have anything you wanted to add.
The quickest way, the quickest way to describe why we start a day later is, there's a Saturday in February where staff is doing open house. So we spend a full day. And that's the easiest way to understand how that might balance out. And like you pointed out, there are other days that staff are doing evenings and just like, just like Essex High School is.
Still, there's still that hang on to October for those, what used to be the convention days.
And that was the time in Calendar two oh. We had a lot of conversation about the fact that when you start school on the twenty-seventh of August and don't have any PD opportunity until after first quarter's over, there's limited time for interventions and communications with families. So we're continuing to try to build in a day of rest and a day of conferences where they'll work a double day. They'll teach and then have conferences at night. So that is still difficult. If we were to go with that seven weeks on and a week off, you know, this is the one place in the school calendar that we still go for a prolonged period of time without that break time. So if it were to be invented again from the very beginning of what we know instructionally, we would never continue with this kind of calendar. But until we can make our tweaks and changes slowly along the way, which we did this year, I am pleased to see that we were able to.
Wouldn't we start after Labor Day to shorten that up?
Yeah, but then you have to expand it. You have, the bookends is the problem. But I think one of the things that surely rang true was our buildings need to be, have some structural changes to have instruction really be valuable with our climate changes and the heat in some of our schools. And that's extending into September now and, hey, it's eighty degrees today. It's April. Welcome, eighty. But I think if we were to have prolonged periods of time like that, it's really difficult. And especially in a school this size with so many in units, classrooms that don't have outside access windows.
So Judy, this was, the parents got this in their, it was disseminated through the schools, the new calendar, right? I know, I'm thinking, I'm thinking I know some, not, I'm sorry, this one would go out once it gets. But the way that we would disseminate this is it would go out through the school primarily, right?
Yes, it'll get posted and the Prudential Committee approved theirs last Thursday.
Right, I was thinking we got it in a folder.
So a lot of, a lot of principals included it in their Friday folders for the youngers. And so this will go out to our principals in some form of communication.
Do you think that any additional communication about this would be helpful to the public? I'm just throwing it out there, because I, I think, you know, that, that change in the February vacation, I think, was addressing the discussion that was had. I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there for general consumption, I think. Because I think if we want to keep having that public engaged conversation about the calendar, if we are trying to make subtle tweaks at this point, I think it would be good to show that there's at least something being done in that realm. And then maybe that might also help set the stage for the further conversations that maybe we're hoping to have and whatever direction we go in, it's just.
Yeah.
It's a good thought, and I think we should continue our conversation about the structure. And we should have Liz facilitate the crowds.
How does, how does, I know, I think there's, there's still some work to be done on kind of lining up all the various assessments, spring assessments. But what's the, what's the, what's the crystal ball say for S-Vax next year? Half days or full days or?
I think we'll have a better feel for that once we get through our pilot. I mean, I was at a principal's meeting last, Chitney County Principal's meeting last Friday and speaking with Mount Mansfield's principal, Mike Weston. They were just finishing up their pilot and they, like we, planned significant time allocation to make sure that there's enough time. And his impressions, having just recently observed it, was they had too much time. But we won't know that until we actually do it. I know the window of time, you asked a good question, is no longer in the October timeframe. It's February, late February through into May is what they said.
Oh, is it that big?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a big window.
Okay.
Ninety days.
Yeah. So, once again, just for the board's information, Michael Hawke and others from the Agency of Education, in terms of the assessment, folks, they're gonna send a team to observe, because we're the biggest entity taking it all at the same time. So they can learn as well. Everybody's learning in this, I believe. So it'll be interesting. I'll probably have a better report for you in June, once we finish the pilots. Yeah, exactly.
So this is a, this is an action item for this evening, right? With the action being approving, approving the calendar, calendar, singularly calendars, plural.
Jack, maybe, maybe, just a procedural question, I guess, on that part. As a board, could we actually disapprove of this calendar? As a board, could we actually disapprove of this calendar? So what would then happen?
So this question.
I'm just curious how that, how that works.
This question came up the other night at PC as well. And I think that it wouldn't be strategic to disapprove a calendar. But I do understand and appreciate the board wanting to have input through the lens of some inputs. And I think this would be a great calendar date, I mean, planning day conversation to talk about what you want us to continue to look at and shape. Some tenants you might have or principals as a board and to see where that may cross over with our other boards. I know that there is some concern about continued early release dates. And if that, if and when that's a topic, I think it's important for us to know before we begin the process. It's important for superintendents to know before we even begin the regional planning for it.
Right, because I'm thinking if, if this is something that does come before us to actually approve, which it does, that, yeah, if we could be a little more involved in just understanding the process or like you said, if we had some.
Agreed upon guidance. If you had agreed upon guidance, just like you do for the budget.
Right, right.
And if I knew that in advance, a planning day, I mean, of the regional work on it, then I would have a voice at that stage. So what principals receive now is set one hundred and seventy-five days. So their scope is narrowed very soon in the process based on the outcome of the Champlain Valley Superintendent's Association's decision.
And when do they, when do they meet?
We begin that process in December.
In December, okay.
So structuring a conversation to set guidance would be valuable. That would be something actually I would appreciate in June, when you have your Carousel Board meeting together. Because it's so hard if you're not in the same room. You know, sixteen board members operating differently to kind of craft a common guidance as you do your, your budget guidance now. Would be helpful.
Yeah, and I, I think it would be, I don't know if we're prepared for it, but it'd be interesting to do that in an appreciative lens rather than in the, we don't want, but more in the.
What we want.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think that, I think that was a great.
That'd be great.
So before we move forward on a vote on this, on the calendars plural, and this is what I'm struggling with tonight. Superintendent to know is the fact that I feel uncomfortable voting on a CTE calendar, which is something I have not seen yet. It wasn't, I understand, it wasn't included in the org notes. We've talked to it tonight. I, I would, is there, is there a need to approve the calendar for CTE this evening? Is it something we could delay till next, next board meeting? I can certainly, I don't know how other board members feel about it, but I don't, I don't feel good about going forward on approving something that I haven't seen yet. Not that I don't think it wouldn't be approved, but I sure would. Director Travers, does that present any issues for you if we, if we hold off on the CTE calendar until May?
Oh, no.
Okay.
I think once you get a chance to take a look at it side by side, you'll see that they're.
Very similar.
Yeah, and that's fine, that's fine.
I'm fine with that.
So, so I'd like to then just go forward with approval for the, for the EHS calendar for two thousand, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Do we have a motion to accept the calendar? Liz, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Al will second, okay. All in favor of approving the Essex High School two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year calendars, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Nay, and we'll, we'll take up the CTE calendar next month when we get a chance to review with them. So, okay, great, thank you. Next, our teacher appreciative, teacher appreciation planning. Erin, is this a topic that you can take us through?
Sure, I, you know, I realized, I looked at the calendar and I realized that May fifth was coming up rapidly. So I reached out to Judy and Rob and Rob connected me with the person on the school or on the student government, Steven Maloney.
Maloney.
Maloney, sorry, Steven Maloney. And so I emailed him just to kind of see what they were planning because I had spoken with Jack to just get a little guidance as far as, you know, my, my feeling in the past is we've typically tried to see what the students are planning and kind of offer support and try to maybe work in conjunction with sort of what their plan is to show the staff appreciation. So I have reached out to him and I actually just heard back this afternoon that what they're planning to do right now is they're, they're thinking of having the students wear blue to support the teachers and getting pens for the staff that say something along the lines of thank you. So it sounds like it's still.
Pen, P-E-N, not P-I-N, pen or pin?
Pens.
Okay, thank you.
And then I think he was mentioning something about, you know, maybe if you wanted to support us in doing a lunch. So I guess I just wanted to throw out there to the board, you know, we don't have to do what we've always done. You know, I think there's a few things we could do. We could say, we'll just, you know, have the students do what the students want to do, have the student government do what they want to do. And then we could do something ourselves. Or we could help fund something that they are doing and we could kind of do it together. So I guess I just want to, we probably really should make a decision tonight based on time as to what we want to do. Steven did offer for me to come.
Wednesday.
To, on Wednesday in the morning.
Yep.
Just, just to stop into the meeting. So, you know, I know that, that I had thrown something out to you, Jack, and this was absolutely totally my, my idea, you know, of, of having like a mug or something to give to each teacher, staff member, you know, with like the EHS, the year and the, you know, the, the school logo and everything on it and saying thank you. Because I thought, my thought process with that was that that would be something that would be lasting, that they could have, they could use. It would have the year on it. I thought there was something kind of lasting about that. Not that I'm at all opposed to doing a lunch or something like that, but, you know, we have done that, I think, the last few years. And I was just thinking of shifting gears a little bit. Like I said, I'm completely throwing this out there, so. And I don't think that that would be a highly expensive thing to do. So I guess, just thoughts on what people would like to do. I, I do think that, I'll just throw out there that, has it, is it historically, at the high school, have the parents never really driven any kind of a teacher appreciation thing?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, because it seems like, it's, it's interesting how different schools are different. And I don't know whether this sort of starts going back to the alumni thing or maybe not necessarily alumni, but, you know, having the parents drive a little bit of that. I know they do obviously a lot of other things, but it just seems like that's kind of the way it's been here. So we.
And certainly for, so far CTE teacher appreciation, it's even more, because the student body is more diverse than just, you know, Essex, in Essex Junction students. It presents problems from appreciation, teacher appreciation standpoint.
Well, and do you just want to do something completely different, you know, for CTE, like find out what's a better fit for them? And is yours the same, are you the same date?
Traditionally, yeah.
For teacher appreciation?
You are the same.
Yeah, every time we've done something.
The teachers come through the same.
Collectively.
And I mean, that would be another thing that I would say, we might not have to do that either. Maybe we could do, you know, something, I don't know. I'm just thinking, do we want to just shake it up a little bit, do something different?
I kind of like that idea of the coffee mug with an EHS logo and a CTE logo.
Right, like we could do it together on the mug or something.
You know, if it is a U forty-six appreciates its teachers or something and having it.
That's nice.
Having some verbiage like that with, with both our schools included there. And then it's something that we can share with our EHS staff and faculty or CTE staff and faculty.
Well, and I thought it was kind of a nice unifying thing too, because I actually, there's a company that I've worked with and just out of curiosity, I asked them, like, they could very, they can put both logos, like they can do the whole mug, they could put the logo on each side, we could put the year. Like it'd be kind of a nice unifying thing too. So, anyway.
So, so, and, and I don't want this to get into a mug planning session.
Right, exactly, exactly.
But I, I don't know what their.
It doesn't have to be a mug.
No, no, but I don't know, A, what the cost would be.
Right.
B, how, you know, we'd have to look in, in the budget and make sure we would have funds to do something like that.
Right.
Or even if we had funds and we knew what we wanted to do, would the manufacturer have enough time to turn, turn something around if we needed to make
I think they would.
Five hundred mugs or whatever.
They definitely would if we could do it, if we could make a decision probably by the end of the week.
Heart and soul did those kinds of mugs that Bob has right there, that travel kind of mugs that were about two dollars and ten cents with logos on them and it took about ten days.
So it's not beyond the realm of possibility.
But I would just ask, what's the student energy like around this? If, if there's something they're really excited about, I would be, that's my one, you said that there's a group of students working. If there's something they'd be really excited about, I love the idea of supporting what the kids, what the students are doing as well. So it might be worth somebody going to the meeting on Wednesday and see if that, if they're, if we're aligned in thinking. I think, I think, I like what you said about it's something they can take away. But I, I also like using student energy and letting them appreciate their teachers in the way that they.
I mean, I guess what I felt a little awkward about was feeling like I was driving the bus a little bit on this.
Right.
Which is kind of what I honestly was doing. So I, and I wanted to be respectful of, you know, I didn't want to step on anything that they were doing, but I was honestly getting the sense that, you know, so, and I know over years different, student government varies from year to year, you know, you get. So, and, and I think definitely their heart, their heart is, is in doing something. But I, I do think that as far as energy level, I couldn't speak to that at this point, so.
I attend every Wednesday morning for their meetings, so it's not imperative that you have, anyone has to be here. I can just bring forth the message you would like me to give to Steve and Wyer and Blake Taylor in particular, those three.
And there's also CTE student government as well.
Yep. So I can't, maybe I could find out if, how often do yours meet? Do yours meet once a week?
We've broken up into subcommittees, so we don't meet as a full student council. We, we have active subcommittees of the student council. And I could find the next date or I could just bring it forward to Linda DeLiva and Chris Crusetti, who would easily help guide the conversation. I think it's a nice touch, where are the school colors? I have a question about mugs, if it's mugs or anything, are we talking staff appreciation or are we talking teacher appreciation because?
I was thinking both.
Yeah, I think that would be important.
We've always done both.
Yep.
Yeah. Sorry, I think sometimes when I use the terms, I mean it like, but definitely, I was thinking in my mind, everybody.
That's important as far as count.
We use it interchangeably, but.
Not necess.
Not necessarily heard interchangeably.
Right. So, I guess we could, what, how, what would you like to do, Jack?
I would like to hear what other members of the board think of this. Gary, you're fine.
Well, I think it's, I like Liz's idea of, if we're gonna have, let's just say we have funds to allocate it in one way, would it be better, or time and funds, would it be better to do your suggestion or to capitalize? Maybe the student government really wants to do something, they just don't have the capacity to do it. Maybe that's where we could step in, help them with that capacity. So I, I think I would need a little bit more, where should we put our focus? You know, this is all good, you know, whichever way we go, but I kind of like your idea of, you know, maybe there's something that they really want to do, but they think we can't because we just can't do it, well, put the backing of board now, maybe they can.
If I could, if I could tell you what I, what I would like to do is I would like to let the student government do what the student government wants to do. And I think the board should do what the.
Would complement those efforts, right, not necessarily drive.
I mean, I, you know, I think, I think it's great that the students are doing something, but I don't, I don't, I, I think it could almost be getting into a situation of maybe like they're kind of almost starting to maybe expect some funding, which we don't mind doing, but then are they almost waiting to hear from us, which we don't want to do? It's, I'm just wondering if there's a little bit of a complicated or confused dynamic there a little bit with this. That's just my, my sense, perhaps I'm not articulating it really well. I, as a board member, want to do, I would, I want to do something to show the appreciation. So I definitely would love to do it in conjunction with the students, but I also don't want to feel like I'm the one prompting them to do it.
Well said.
So.
So would you be willing to go on Wednesday morning and take the pulse of?
Seven forty-five, so what time does that?
Probably seven thirty would be better. Only because around seven fifty, they're looking for a motion to adjourn.
Oh, okay.
For Erin, if it's difficult.
Yeah, I can, I can take the message.
You know, I might be able, because if it's only, I can probably like swing in on, but if not, maybe, you know, you and I can chat.
Sure.
I'm going to plan on, on being there. And then I'll get with you on what you think is the best way for you to hook up with, you know.
Perfect.
Go, meet in the main office and then we can go down.
Okay, okay, that sounds good.
Okay, anything else we need to address on the teacher slash staff appreciation? We'll move on then to principal reports and actually our director for Center for Technology Essence.
Okay.
Mr. Travers.
So looking over the last month in my report, I, I pointed out that in the area of safe, healthy and respectful learning environments, we had a number of things to report on. CTE Student Council, along with the advisor and some faculty reviewed the YRBS, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. Data that is broken out from all the sending, area of sending high schools to be reported as a CTE data point. We reviewed it, the Student Council Subcommittee called Empowered Students formed their own action plan task team around the data that they reviewed and they'll be meeting to come up with some ideas to address some of the larger concerns. We're also active in the Tuesday, April twenty-ninth Dialogue Night. I know it's not called Dialogue Night now, it's, I don't remember what it's called, but Moving Up or something like that. Which is focusing on the transition from eighth grade to high school, so we'll be represented there as well. Learning and Achievement, two female students from the Automotive Program have been selected to compete in Ford AAA competition, which is a regional New England competition we've had great success at in the past. This is the first time that an all-female student from Vermont has represented at that competition. We're quite proud of that. We had our National Technical Honor Society Night, we inducted forty new students and had ten returning students. And as always, thank you to Superintendent De Nova. Jack and Gary were also there. Great night once again.
Yeah, wonderful.
I think the, the professional foods group really outdid themselves on the food that night, just exquisite. It's my favorite night of the year, other than Recognition Night, first day of school. Action Plan for priorities for next coming month, we're going to get the, we're going to get the climate survey data. I think the last check before last week was that we were trending towards ninety percent student participation and eighty percent staff participation. Family participation is up, but it's still way off from what it should. Family participation is up, but it's still way off from what it should be. I don't remember the number, but I think it's in the teens right now. Try to get the families to log on and do the, and do the, uh, survey. Um, ongoing initiative, something that I would like the board to know also is we, um, expanded natural resources by one full section, which increased the enrollments in the, Natural Resources Combined Forestry and Mechanical Program, um, by a third. So instead of forty students, we're taking sixty students this year. We were able to do that because we reduced the pre-tech track, but we're using that room to be able to accept more juniors and seniors. We also expanded the, um, Computer Animation, Web Design Two program by six seats, by redesigning the room, there you go, Al, um, which is actually a fifty percent increase in the second year program. Um, so we have eighteen instead of twelve students coming back. Um, let's see. Two more things. Something I'd like the board to know, our admissions day was on April first, it was not April Fool's Day, but, um, it was a good day. We invited four hundred and twenty-three, three hundred and ninety-three attended. Uh, we actually, over the, that time, since that time, have enrolled and accepted more than four hundred students. Right now, I think the numbers are greater than four hundred and fourteen on four hundred and eighty-five possible openings. So we're eighty-five percent full, provided the numbers that we have now hold and we know that we have an attrition rate of fifteen percent. In some programs a little bit less than others, so we'll continue to accept applications and put them on waitlists. Those numbers don't include the intro programs, which are potentially seventy-four enrollment slots, which equals about thirteen point eight full-time equivalent students, so. I think we had a very good admissions season. I wanna thank the staff personally, let you know that they did an amazing job. It's always a grind at this time of year. We're looking at potentially moving it to an earlier time next year.
Mm-hmm.
Last thing I'd hand out is the results from Skills USA competition. Quick Look has us winning nine gold medals, nine silver medals, nine bronze medals. Which means a junket of seventeen. Six adults and eleven students will be going to Kansas City.
Fantastic.
That's great.
There's actually more medals than, more gold medals and more silver medals than the nine, because a couple of the, a couple of the competitions were teams, so.
Could charter a plane.
We, might charter a, a wagon train instead with the cost of, uh,
Wonderful.
with the cost of airline, so. That falls into the, that falls into both, something I want the board to know and in the area of student learning achievement.
And actually, just to compliment, uh, CTE had the highest staff participation in climate throughout all of our schools.
Appreciate it. That's good. Bob, you talked about, um, uh, you know, you, the, uh, number of accepted students and, and how many openings that you still had. Are there, are there any programs that are, are fully enrolled and that you're, we're not entertaining taking anymore or?
There are a number that are fully enrolled and we are entertaining taking applications just in the event that we have, so.
Just in case, so you've got a contingency, huh?
Yep, yep. Pre-tech is fully enrolled, although we have the requirement that they have to have five credits for in the core academic areas. So we have as many on the waitlist, almost as many on the waitlist as we have enrolled.
Okay.
So that's a tricky process of getting the data on their credits to us early enough so that we can move people up off the waitlist.
And then, and then conversely, what, what are the program or programs that have the most, uh, availability?
So this year, professional foods, for some reason, um, there's a little blip there. We're looking good, but could use a few in auto. We're looking real strong in both building tech programs, but could use a couple. We're not, we're talking single digits like four or five. Childhood ed holding strong, but could use two or three. Computer Systems Tech combined with the second year and the first year, I would call them full, given the facility at this point. Computer Animation and Web Design, both first and second year are full. Cosmetology this year came back very strong, they're full. And if you remember last year, we, we had off numbers. Dental assistant for some reason this year is down. We have twenty-four accepts, but I could, I could definitely take nine more, uh, but we're, 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 we're working on it. Engineering, full. I, I can't, I can't put another student in engineering. And if you remember, three or four years ago, we were looking at seven or eight enrollees and now we've got twenty-five. Graphic design is full between both programs. Natural Resources is full. Pre-tech is full, so. Just the ones that could use a few dental, pro foods, um, a few in auto and a few in building.
There are, uh, I'd had a conversation with Donna Robert,
Great.
uh, earlier on, the, uh, and, and I have to apologize, I don't know the name of the cosmetology school that closed in, in Williston.
Yes. Yep.
And we were trying to look to see how we, we might be able to support some of those displaced students. Is there anything you can report on that to us or?
Sure, so she's, she has, um, spoken with both representatives from the school and students who are interested in trying to, um, enter into CTE. There are one or two students who we believe we can help right away.
Okay.
Um, who are short on a s- small amount of hours. They're really working towards being able to sit for the state cosmetologist license. Um, there is a summer option that we're building for those who have a medium range, uh, number. And then there's next year's counseling for students who are five hundred hours or more, which would fall into our first year program.
Okay, good.
So we're, we're, we're working it.
Good.
We're responding to every call we get.
Thank you.
One question, it's about the engineering, uh, computer automation and web design courses. How big of a gap is there between demand for those courses and numbers of available seats?
Right now, we are, right now, we accepted all that it, that applied to engineering, so nobody's going unserved.
Okay.
Um, with the expansion in year two for computer animation, we accepted every one of them that qualified.
Good.
So there's no un, unmet demand there. Um, and in the first year, um, we have held steady at the number that we've accepted. Um, I think if we turn away students in the first year, it typically might be five. So there may be a way to configure that space as well.
Okay, so we're, we're doing a better job of mag-
We're, we're closing the gap.
Closing that gap down and,
Yep, absolutely.
better meeting needs.
Mm-hmm.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions for Director Travers?
Good.
If not, Principal Reardon?
Thanks, Jack. Well, a lot of good information in the report, based on last time we met tonight. Scholars Bowl, the two students who I just received notification on prior submitting the, uh, principal's report in terms of receiving the National Merit Scholarship, uh, can't tell you who they are, it's gag order till May seventh, but they'll be very happy when they get their information. In terms of leadership positions that I wanted to update you on, in terms of the curriculum content leaders, um, Tim Root, looks like he will, uh, remain in social studies. Uh, English, there are two candidates for the CCL position. Math, Justin Norris, looks like he'll be the CCL and, uh, Laura Williams in terms of world language. Uh, fine arts is still, uh, being worked out as we speak. In terms of other hires, as long as we're on the topic of hiring, we've, as you know, replaced Barbara Highland, because you approved the new hire at the last meeting. We've got two recommendations for hire tonight, um, Michelle Rath's replacement and also Valerie Smith's replacement. And today we spent all day interviewing, uh, four folks for the athletic director position, so I'll have a, another recommendation, uh, come May. So in terms of, uh, our, our major hires, we're, uh, coming down the home stretch, if you will. In terms of, uh, other pieces that I wanted to just touch on briefly, in terms of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, I'll go over a couple of, uh, highlights, if you will, because you've obviously got all the, the information. We spent the March tenth faculty meeting, sharing the data with the faculty and breaking up in small work groups. To get feedback and, uh, points of view as we look to start to craft our, our new action plan and using some of these results as, uh, perhaps guiding principles. Also, uh, as Bob alluded to, on April twenty-ninth, which is two weeks from tomorrow, there'll be the, uh, Community Dialogue Night in terms of, uh, inviting students, parents, faculty, to look at and review this most recent Youth Risk Behaviors, uh, survey data. If you recall, the last time we had a dialogue night, it was on February nineteen, twenty thirteen.
Right.
Coming off Sandy Hook and we had multiple stakeholders there. It's school, uh, personnel, we had counselors, we had police and we had mental health professionals. Uh, Deb Caustine Lamb, our SAP is gonna be, or is, working on, on the agenda and we're gonna try and, carry over some of those important takeaways from that very meaningful night and connect it to the most recent data. And also tie into the, uh, regular feedback we get from Essex Police in regards to trends in the community, because of course, a lot of the information that you see in the Youth Risk Behavior, uh, survey is certainly, school is part of, but it's not the only piece. There's a community and family component and how we tie that all together. So once again, April twenty-ninth, not sure, it's either gonna be a five-thirty or six o'clock start time, but we'll have more information on that. Should be, uh, it should be, um, a very productive night. In terms of the most, uh, recent statistics, um, on the good news side, we, our, our students continue at a ninety-five percent rate to wear seat belts when they're in the car. And those are observations of cars coming in and leaving the parking lot where they're observed without any, uh, forewarning. A, a, a trend that continues for our students is in terms of, uh, marijuana. And the rate of students who believe that regular marijuana use puts them at risk of harm continues to drop, which is concerning. And to coincide with that on the, uh, other part of the driving component, beyond the seat belts, the rate of students driving a car while impaired from marijuana rose significantly from fourteen to twenty percent from two years ago. And twenty-seven percent of students report riding with a driver who had been smoking marijuana versus ten percent for alcohol. So the good news is we've made pretty good, significant inroads in with the alcohol. The bad news is, uh, perhaps is going on in Colorado and Washington, uh, you know, the thought of marijuana being harmful is not widely felt by the student population. And certainly I can tell you that in many different ways in schools, both at the high school and in the K eight schools, I mean, the message is clearly that it's not something that is gonna be in anyone's best interest in terms of, um, in terms of their health. So there's certainly more work to be done there and that's been something that's been, you know, on the, on the front burner for a couple of Youth Risk Behavior, uh, offerings. On page six, in terms of your data, a couple of things. Uh, the, the, the troubling statistic in terms of were offered, sold or given in the, students were offered, sold or given an illegal drug on school property during the past twelve months. It dropped, but didn't drop enough to make us feel real good about it. Now unfortunately, what the, the test doesn't tease out for us is the feedback is given, but the, the specificity is, is not. So we continue to work and, and try and figure out ways where we can minimize those, uh, transactions or potential transactions from occurring. And finally, on page ten, in terms of youth assets, teachers really care about you and give you a lot of encouragement. That was up from two thousand and eleven, so that's trending, uh, in the way we'd like to, to see. And also, students feel that like they matter to people in their community. That also is up from the last, um, well, it's about flat from the last one, but it's up from the previous two. So that's something that, uh, hopefully will continue to be on the upswing. But there's a tremendous amount of information, uh, in the results and we're gonna, we're gonna look to pursue those at the Dialogue Night on April twenty-ninth. And a couple of other points on the report, uh, there was a significant amount of, uh, adult professional development that went on. We had a group that went to Los Angeles to the ASCD conference. And also, um, I accompanied a group to the New England Secondary School Consortium in Norwood, Massachusetts. And you can see the themes that were, uh, shared and we've actually had both groups get together and share with each other and we're working on doing that for the greater faculty. They were both tremendous experiences. Wanted to talk just a minute about the tip four-one-one line. We're looking to roll that out, um, April twenty-eighth. It's been, and I say we, cause CTE is involved, and it's been an intentional, um, we've slowed down just a little bit because we're one of the schools, one, well, we're the only high school in Vermont, but we're one of the few schools, um, in the nation that is using an anonymous text tip line that is, it will not be directly linked to the police department. So that's fine, but we wanna be really sure that we have our ducks in a row, including communication and also, you know, the monitoring of it. And all the de- the details that go, that go with it. So based on the, um, as you recall, the discretionary money that I had, this is where we, we paid for it for two years. So I'm really excited about it going live, but I want it to go live well, not just go live because we wanna get it up there, there quickly. So I know working with, uh, Vince Canillo and Carmen Cormier from IT, uh, we're looking to, uh, get our administrative teams trained. And my understanding is it's a very simple training, but that's a fifteen to twenty-minute endeavor and then to have a chance to meet together so that we can get this off and, and have it meet the kids where they're at. Cause obviously if we're gonna have our students, which they are, the eyes and ears to keep everybody safe, then this will be the modality of communication. Not a, a phone line that nobody's used for quite a while, I would say. And, um, lastly, I'd like to give kudos to the student, government students that really assisted us with, um, parents who came to the parent teacher conferences in terms of getting feedback on our mission statement, cause that's part of the NEOS process. We have to revisit the mission statement and get significant parental input and based on their good work, we had eight students over the course of the night and they were very impressive as we collected over two hundred parent surveys. And, uh, some of them may have a career in sales, I don't know, they were very good. I was, but they're very helpful to say the least, so. A, a lot going on and, and certainly the month of May is gonna be extremely busy with the number of advanced placement, uh, assessments. Science kneecap, the S-PAC pilot, honors night and the race to the finish line for graduation, so it's real busy, but it's a good busy. Those are the highlights.
Well, okay. Some relief because impaired driving laws in Vermont may change. So it may not be just a DWI, any impairment may be a conviction. I, I did wanna give you some feedback on the bullying, uh, the three categories. Certainly they're, they're moving in the right direction.
Yes.
But they still not s- statistical significance, but it's, it's a good change in the right direction. The weapons are down a little bit, but it's still pretty concerning on texting or emailing while trying to drive. That's a high number, thirty-three percent is pretty high.
It is. First, that, that's, it's a good point, it's also the first year they asked that question, so now we have a baseline data point.
A baseline.
And now we'll see what happens in two years.
Right.
But I know that's something that we've had, uh, as recently as last year, we closed off the west parking lot, which is the one directly across from the gymnasium. And we had a course set up and we had, we had students actually drive through the course, uh, with a, a adult who was part of the evaluation process and they were driving through a, uh, course with cones. And they were texting, I mean, obviously they did not- and they were texting, and they could, obviously, they did not perform very well, so they, it's certainly not through lack of exposure, it's probably a combination of factors, perhaps they see it at home, perhaps they're, feel it's attached at the hand, there's, you know, there's many reasons, and it's, it's something that is just being routinely addressed in driver education.
And there's a little take-up in this, using prescription drugs, not prescribed for youth.
Yeah.
Given the biggest concerns here, what's the plan going forward? Do you have any thoughts from staff?
Well, we have, we have faculty feedback which will form action plan steps, and also, we have to have the dialogue night on the twenty ninth to get feedback, hopefully, from parents and stu-, students and community members. So, it's, we have some feedback from the faculty, but there's more to it than that.
Rob, I just had a question.
Sure.
I guess it's page thirty-six of the form notes, I guess. Well, one thing that really jumped out at me was the percentage of female students, you know, purposefully hurting themselves.
Oh, yeah.
It's saying that, you know, it's almost a quarter of all the female students, and I just wondered, you know, what steps were being taken to try to address that in the school.
Well, through the school counselors, health classes, and advisory, and also considering that there are, tactically say this, there are more families in distress, and as a result of that, there are more students in distress. And female students, unfortunately, that's one of their response mechanisms to some of the stressors they feel is to, is to cut or burn oneself. And, yeah, we're seeing an uptick in, in that, in terms of the family dynamic, and a data point there would be the number of CPTs we have, each child protection team meetings on students, that are significantly up, and also, the fact that our social workers, they all have a full, they all have full case loads with waiting lists. So, I think those data points are indicative of, you know, we're seeing some declining enrollments, but yet, with the enrollments we have, there are, there are some situations that are pretty severe. Yeah.
Maybe that's something you should keep in mind when you start, when you look at resources next year.
That's already on my list, to be honest with you.
Yeah, that's something that just continued, I mean, that, that was startling to me when I saw that.
Yeah.
We've, we've been doing this survey for a while, and I think it's been, this kind of survey has been going on for a while. I'm sure the conversations come up, can you just refreshen about data validity, about underreporting, the whole self-reporting, either overreporting, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, the, the way the questions are comprised and ordered, it teases out someone's just making stuff up.
Yeah.
Which there is in some situations, and also, someone that would just, you know, I'm not going to put it down. So, it tends to tease it out in the way it's administered, because that question is asked fairly often. As a matter of fact, I ask it to student government, and I get some very interesting answers in terms of some that say, oh, yeah, it's, you know, a total farce with some students and others are, are pretty accurate, and some will say they feel that it's not reported as much as it should be, so it's, it's the way the assessment is comprised.
Yeah.
So, do you feel then that this, this number, like, you felt like that was pretty accurate?
Yeah, I would say certainly with it, yeah, it's, it's a valid number, I guess I would say that.
Right, not, not, you can't have it be-
Correct.
Yeah, and, and my question by no means was on that, my question was on all of it.
Just in general, yeah.
And I, and I think that, and I think that, I think the entire element is one that should provide us points of emphasis rather than huge amounts of statistical data points, because it is, it is, it's a changing population. You know, it's, I believe the way this is, is it's ninth grade compared to ninth grade, you know, again, it's that kind of senses, it's not necessarily, we're not necessarily seeing what one grade cluster is over time, we're seeing what the ninth grade is now compared to the ninth grade last time and that and so forth. So, you know-
You have to look at, like, trends.
Yeah, there's a little bit of kneecapping going on here.
Yeah.
And we're not necessarily knowing-
N-E-C-A-P.
Yeah, and we're not necessarily knowing context and so forth, but what it does is it, it allows us to tease out particular places of emphasis and of concern that we feel could be key places of influence and advantage for us, you know, so that, where's that biggest correlator? So, where, where can we push and then have the greatest advantage to the greatest number of students? So, it's not so much like, this is eighteen and it was nineteen.
Right.
So, we have a problem, but it's trying to find those overall relationships that, that have that.
And at the same time, you have to balance what, two things. Up until very recently, the eighth grade was part of the high school, now they're separate, they're no longer with the high school. But I think more importantly than that, we touched on it a moment ago, is the prescription drug situation. Well, being part of the Essex Community Safety Committee, we have a meeting tomorrow, and also, I meet with the police in August, every, every August, just to get an idea of what's trending in the community, because we're a reflection of the community. So, it's important to note that, you know, each year, there are different things going on. For example, this past summer, when I met with Brad LaRose and some of the officers, it was, the community is being, no surprise, seeing heroin in quantities never seen before. Now, that doesn't mean that it's at the high school level, but the bottom line is, if it's in our families and in household, that's going to trickle down in terms of problems. And prescription drug, we never had farm parties, PHRM, and we've had a few with students who make choices like that to take prescription medication that's not theirs. So, you know, there are certain societal trends that factor into this as well, which don't necessarily skew numbers, but they present different numbers.
Yeah.
Because of different times.
Yeah.
So, that's another factor to keep in mind.
And, and economic distress, like you said.
Yeah, exactly. So, it's very interesting.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Rob. Anything else for Principal Reardon? If not, we'll move on then. Reports from the board task teams. We have actually communications, which our next meeting is May thirteenth. We had a meeting last Monday or Tuesday?
Tuesday.
That's right, it was last Tuesday night.
Yeah, of course.
Gary, can you, can you give us a quick brief?
Yeah. Discuss two main things, the smaller the issues, at least in terms of time, was, went through the new board member orientation slides, and some comments were made from Judy and Ben. Looks pretty solid, I mean, it was pretty good, and then we just kind of made a few recommendations, so that looks like it's well organized. We spent most of the time discussing the issue of having all emails and postings and org notes and everything else going to a single site, the CCSU account. And the issue that came up with that are, are there any problems? For example, I had difficulty downloading paper because I didn't know how to do that. I also, today, found out that my work computer apparently has a version of Explorer that does not support CCSU, so again, I was blocked out of it.
I was having-
Now, I sent it to Ben, and he sent me a copy, so all was fine, but the question was, you know, are other people having issues with that? It also came up that would it be advantageous and even cost efficient for board members to have, I'll make sure I use the right word this time, Chromebooks, I kind of Googled books and got laughed at, so, the Chromebooks. I don't know about this stuff. So, anyway, but would that be something that would be well spent money? Is that something, you know, I know Jack brought up, I believe that he's already has enough devices where he can get everything that he wants, he doesn't need something else. But the other issues came up with assessing the site in terms of how is it being CT, is it by phone or iPad or whatever else is out there? So, it really was, I guess to bring it to the rest of board, how your experience has been with this website, I think in general, we kind of agree this is a great idea, you know, it's very much succinct and streamlined, but are there going to be issues with accessing what we want, especially on some quick turnaround items like executive sessions where we might only have a few days notice or something? So, I guess, as I remember it, so we could open that up for a little bit to see what your guys' opinion is on those issues.
I had, I had a little bit of issue, it sounds like, along the lines of what you had, I did talk to, to, I think that's about it, though.
Yeah.
But, I don't know about another device, though.
It's true.
Well, thanks for, anytime you discover a bug like that, you know, working those out in advance.
Yeah, I guess it was like, it was like a browser related.
Yeah.
Kind of walked me through it, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that was my suggestion, that's, we need to have a document that kind of explains how to navigate some of the aspects of this site, how it's being set up, how documents are being named and numbered. It would just make it a little easier to have something to refer to, and we wouldn't have to keep calling back, where is this? Find it.
Well, the major problem has been access and knowing to check it frequently.
Yeah.
I think that that's a change of behavior that we talked about at the meeting, instead of having information in your, appearing in your email, knowing, you gotta go there for the information, and it's just different behavior.
I kind of suspect that there's been a reduction in access because people kind of get discouraged and don't ask or are afraid to ask.
Well, scheduling meetings has really been the most difficult of all. In fact, we have two that Jack's gonna talk about tonight with meeting wizards and AI, but getting people to respond to these meeting wizards and getting dates identified and confirmed and warned, we really need your help with that.
I know, and before we move off communications, I'd also say that it's, we, it's incumbent on us board members to let administration know how we, how we need to receive the information too. It's not just how do we expect them to deliver to us, but how we receive it, you know? I mean, I'm looking around the table tonight, we all have paper, I see two laptops, I've got cell phones, I've got, we've got a tablet over here, I mean, and that's just on the electronic side of things, on how we, how we get information right. And so, and every one of us has our own way of doing things, even if we had common tools with common software, you know, there's, everyone has their own style and the way that they're comfortable doing it, and so, how do we take these human factors into account to disseminate information and get the things out, out to us that, that are useful to us is, is, is a topic that we spend some time discussing. Okay? Thank you, Gary, by the way. A policy, Brian, can you talk policy?
Yeah, there's a number, within the packet, there are a number of policies that are presented to the board for first reading, so I'd like to make sure that we spend a little bit of time just to understand that this is the opportunity for the U forty-six board to review, consume, question, revise these policies. They'll go back to the U forty, the CCSU at the next meeting, and at that point in time would have sort of a final reading and would be adopted. There's an employment practices policy, which is sort of an administrative update, freshening that up, but the big one that is in here is B twenty, which has had a number of different conversations. We last talked about this as a board in trying to provide some instruction back to the policy committee and what we would like to see this policy be shaped as. I don't believe at that time, U forty-six had any instructions. It has had some reshaping, and you can see that there's been some further definitions placed inside of the policy as far as non-official communication and official communication, and now there's a clear reference back to the Vermont School Board Association Code of Conduct, which we discussed and has been circulated for our signatures. So, again, this is our policy review process, this is our first reading and would be our chance as a board to have input into the policies. The next meeting of the policy committee has actually been canceled, it was scheduled for Wednesday. We typically meet the third Wednesday of every month, so we'll probably just get back onto our schedule starting next month on the third Wednesday.
May twenty-one.
Great.
So, Brian, you just want us to give you our feedback on?
Yeah, if you have it now, or you can send it to me, otherwise, I can carry it to the policy subcommittee next month, or you can also feel free, if you, you also can go to Paul O'Brien as well, but feel free to use me, and on our policy subcommittees, myself. Gary, and do we have one more?
Well, Ryan was, I think it's just two of us.
Is it just two of us? Bush?
Yes, just the two. We read earlier who's on the, who's on the committee, and frankly, I-
Well, he had that right here.
Well, we certainly struggling up to meeting people, George.
Oh, yeah. Yep. Here's the outnumbering.
Was it just two?
Yeah, me too.
That's right. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, just two.
Next, negotiations. Erin, I wonder if you could fill us in on negotiations?
Yes, we have our next meeting on Wednesday night, and then we have just scheduled another meeting for, I think, tentatively, May first. And I must admit, I did download and print out the, the current stand on the agreement. A lot of headway has been made, a lot. The few that are left, you know, were not a surprise, and I think this meeting on Wednesday night should be really good as far as just getting really up to date on kind of how things are going. My understanding is, is that so far, things have been, have been going very well.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I think, did you, I don't know, did you want to comment on the, the, I don't know if we wanted to mention the areas that still have not been?
Well, we can comment on that, but also to know that there's another small group negotiations beginning at three-thirty prior to the five-thirty meeting, and we're hoping that that may be the last one.
Oh, that's great.
That we'll be through that body for.
Yes, yeah.
And May first is tentative, we need to check that date with the teachers at three-thirty on that night, but we're moving along, as Erin said, I think, do you have a, I don't have it in front of me, the four areas.
I think definitely the work day.
Mm-hmm.
The leave section.
Leaves, mm-hmm.
And then there was towards the end, I should have brought it with me, I'm sorry, Jack.
General provisions.
Yep, general provisions, it might have only been those three.
Yeah, and then just duration.
Just duration, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, out of sixteen articles.
Mm-hmm.
And I, and I think, I might have touched on the last time we talked about it, but
the, you know, the concept of the unified really has gone very well.
Very well.
So, I think that's really great.
Very well.
So.
I'm most proud of that work this year.
And thank you, Erin, anything else? And then finally, leaders at work? I'll talk about leaders at work, the focus on, I'm sorry, Al?
Yeah, go ahead.
The focus on that has been on superintendent's evaluation process and how that annual work plan that we, we need to define and feed back up through the executive committee, which meets on Wednesday, to talk about what those key things, the things, Erin, that you had mentioned, you know, what do we want to do from a planning day standpoint? Really need to be codified earlier so that we can get those incorporated into an annual work plan that we would then, U forty-six, up through our representatives on the CCSU board, participate in collaboratively with, with the other districts in defining what those criteria are. Recall, I think we've discussed this before, we're in this, a two-phase, or two phases of the evaluation are running concurrently. The current phase will be the superintendent's evaluation that will conclude for the period on the thirtieth of June, okay? And then we get into the summative assessment at that point after. And then we get into the, uh, summative assessment of that point after, after that. And then also the, uh, creation for the, uh, what the goals, the AYP are for next fiscal year, which starts on the first of July.
And that document is on the web.
Okay, on the, on the, uh.
Site.
Site, yeah, it's on the site.
Yeah, it's on our site, so.
So I would encourage, I would encourage all members to, to take a look at, at what, what data is up there and what's going on in the superintendent's evaluation process.
Right.
We have transferred the, uh, new board member communications really off of leaders at work to really being part of communications now. And I think, um, we'll, we'll see some of that really manifest itself in our planning days, uh, in our, in our board member training that we'll be doing. Anything else, any questions for me on, uh, leaders at work?
I would just add that that meeting was rescheduled, and so it's confirmed it'll be April twenty-ninth.
April twenty-ninth, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, any other items that the board needs to be aware of, uh, initiatives, uh, task teams, did I miss anything?
This is a good time to look at the meeting wizard maybe, as far as the AI work that this board is doing. Ben had sent out two invitations. I think it might have been confusing. One was for a rescheduling of our AI training. The other one was to try and get the date for our community event. So some of you responded to one and not the other, because you might have thought probably they were, you already did it and you might have thought it was a duplicate.
I missed the community one. Sorry, I missed that part.
But I did do the AI one.
I did do the AI, so the.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
I, I, no, I, I thought I.
So Jack has the results.
So I have, um, the results here, and this is the, this is the, uh, the AI training session that we'll talk about first here, okay?
And that one, did, did the date get affirmed for it?
I think I.
I think I have it on my calendar.
I think it's on mine.
Well, there, uh, of, of the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, uh, nine respondents, only four of, four of us have responded guilty as charged.
To the.
No, I have not responded yet to this. Uh, there are, uh, three dates that have been offered up. Tuesday, May sixth at five-thirty, Wednesday, May seventh at five-thirty, and Thursday, May eighth at five-thirty.
And you should have, that I, I think I said Thursday, but I could probably do Wednesday too.
Did I respond?
No, not according, not according to this.
Okay, so, so should Ben, is Ben gonna resend that, or are we gonna try to decide right now?
I, 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 I would think we should try and decide right now.
Great.
So, so again, on Tuesday, May sixth, Wednesday, May seventh, or Thursday, May eighth. Brian, you'd already responded, Erin, you had already responded, although you're saying that, um, Wednesday, May seventh, you had unavailable, but now you're saying it could be available.
Yeah. Yeah, I can, yes, if that helps, I can do either day.
Uh, I can do the seventh or the eighth, I can't do the sixth.
All right. No, yes, yes, okay.
And I always say Tuesday's my best day.
Tuesday is, uh, so Al, Tuesday is yes, Wednesday and Thursday, no, no?
Uh, can be done, but it's a stretch. Everything's a stretch now.
Well, I'm being very binary here, it's either a yes or a no, not a stretch or maybe, so I, when I hear that is, I'm gonna say yes, okay?
Yeah, I can make it.
Yes, stretch is a yes.
See you there, Al.
Want to hear him, want to hear him? I'm gonna take a look myself here on.
It's pretty bad when you can't take a vacation that.
Sorry, what time did you say?
Five-seventh.
Five, five-thirty.
Five course dinners provided.
I can, I can do any of those, yes, 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 so. Mary Jane, don't know, she hasn't, um.
All of those are different, Mary Jane.
And then Bob Travers, you're the, you're, you're on here too, is someone you need to know your availability for?
I think you stepped out of the room, there were two invitations.
I answered both of them.
Oh, well.
I thought I did too.
And I think the ones that I answered, I think actually they, as they came to me, they were both the same invitation. When I opened the second invitation, it had the answers from the first invitation.
Mm-hmm.
And I said yes to the first two dates, but not the third.
Yeah, I see that, I see that here.
It's confusing.
I thought, yeah.
On Al.
Of course, I'm easily confused.
I'm not saying I'm right, I did it right, I'm just, this is what I remember.
That's what I remember too. So there's something odd with the way it went out, okay. Well, it looks like, uh, May is.
It came up like four times, the invitation.
Gary's the only one.
Gary's the only one.
Gary, do you have any flexibility on May eighth?
May eighth is possible, six is out.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be, no, yes, yes.
You got it, you got it.
So, uh, uh, based on that information, thank you, Gary, the, uh, the AI, uh, training will be Thursday, May eighth at five-thirty.
Great.
Okay? Then the second one we need to do is the, uh, community engagement event. Uh, the three dates on that are Wednesday, May twenty-eighth, Thursday, May twenty-ninth, and Thursday, June fifth. All three of those are at six-thirty PM.
On Thursday, Jack, can you say that again?
Wednesday, May twenty-eighth, Thursday, May twenty-ninth, and Thursday, June fifth at six-thirty PM. This is the commu-, uh, uh, community engagement night.
And what times are those?
They're all at six-thirty.
Till, it's like a two hour roughly.
Probably nine.
Two and a half, I think.
Two and a half.
Yeah, six-thirty to nine.
I, I think I answered that, okay.
Well, eh, yes, I think you did, although this is, it's hard for me to read when it says old message, I don't know what that means, the data there, but.
Looks like Brian and Al are squared away.
I know, this is a yes, this is a yes, this is a no for me.
So for May twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth are yes, and fifth is no?
Yes, yes, no, okay.
What is the time for the community event?
Six-thirty PM. So Gary, um.
Yeah, I don't know, because I wasn't expecting going that late. I know Wednesday's gonna always be my best day.
So Wednesday will be your best day?
Yeah. We have probably some other ones, I don't think I'm locked out of any of those necessarily.
And, and Rob, would you be available on Wednesday, the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Yes.
We got it.
There, we're just, we're calling it, it's gonna be Wednesday, the twenty-eighth at, uh.
Six-thirty.
Six, six-thirty, Erin, I. Well, I'm asking you now, but I'm not saying it's gonna make any difference. Now, Wednesday, so Wednesday, May twenty-eighth at six, at, uh, six-thirty for the community event.
You got a location for these things, is that?
Probably AI training's probably gonna be.
Hart Street.
Hart Street.
Community engagement, probably TBD.
TBD.
Okay.
I would expect onsite here.
In the cafeteria or in the auditorium.
That's why it's good to have the date, so we can reserve wherever you prefer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we're settled on that then?
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you, and, and we'll get those, uh, then we'll have meeting notices go out.
Yes, to confirm.
Okay, our consent agenda, uh, we have the following items, we have the, uh, approve the warrants, approve, um, meeting minutes, we have recommendations for professional appointments, and resignation acknowledgements. Do we have anything that needs to be pulled from the consent agenda? Do we have any adds to the consent agenda?
For an add, I'll bring forward, since the, um, passage, successful passage of your budget, you had a conditional RIF in the event that it failed, so I'm bringing back that contract.
Okay.
Tonight for your approval.
Okay.
Can we, uh, talk about CCSU board update?
Uh. When I, uh, it's a good question, I don't think so, although when I saw the CCSU board update, talked about policy B twenty and in the first reading, that's what I interpreted that to be, so.
Good, just wanted, just wanted to check.
Yeah.
Okay.
Judy, could I comment on the, uh, April third meeting minutes? Just to, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Erin was present. And we need her, because otherwise it wasn't a quorum, wouldn't be a quorum based on minutes.
Thank you, Rob.
You're there.
She was very valuable that time.
I, I would agree, that's why I, I just wanted to make that point.
So, uh, technically what we'll do is then we'll, we'll, uh, I'll pull the April third, April third minutes from the consent agenda.
Thanks.
The, uh, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Al, second by Erin. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Consent agenda passed six-nil. The April third meeting minutes, which had been pulled, uh, what I heard Principal Reardon suggests is that they need to be corrected to include, um, Erin as there that, that evening.
Yes.
If we could correct those, do I have a motion then to approve the April third meeting minutes as amended for Erin's inclusion?
So moved.
Moved by Al, I'll make that, I'll second that then.
Okay, let's go.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes six-nil, thank you for that. Correction there, Rob. Next up, uh, agenda items that should be calendared for future board meetings. I have, I have two that need to be included. One item is, well, one item I, I want to maybe discuss with the board, and that's the motorcycle safety course that was brought to our attention tonight. What, uh, uh, I, I thought, quite frankly, we had put this to bed.
I did too.
Okay, uh, but I'm willing to enter, I, as speaking as one board member here, would be willing to have a, open this up one more time and just address this.
I, I think in fairness, we should. I, I, you know, at the time, it seemed kind of strange that they wouldn't have any representative here, but I didn't understand the background of what happened. But, uh, it seems like a reasonable explanation, and I, I think we should revisit that decision.
All right, um. You're, you're pondering something there, Mr. Donahue.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what do we, what do you, are you looking to have us take action? Are you, are we having discussion, are we, are we looking for data, are we deliberating, what do we, what's your intention?
It sounds like we have to just, do we have to just get back to her as to whether or not she would come back? Is that sort of what we have to, we have to do?
This board has taken action, um, ear- earlier, and I don't recall the exact dates, that we would not be entertaining having the motorcycle safety course.
Right, so we have to decide if we want to talk more about this.
So, so we have to decide, um, you know, to put this on the agenda for future discussion really is what we have to decide tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Or do we decide to stick with our original decision and, um, so maybe that's what I'm opening up now. Do we, do we want to include this for a future discussion item, or are we satisfied with our previous decision? Is that more what?
Yeah, I, that's what I.
Okay, no, I, I think that's, that's fair, okay.
Wasn't advocating one way or another, I was just curious on whether Al said he was, he wanted to reconsider our decision. I didn't know if that was what you were asking us to do, or.
Right, it's, I'm asking, it's either to reaffirm our previous decision or put this on, on the agenda for our next board meeting. Any, any thoughts?
I think what she talked about tonight was a number of items that I didn't have knowledge about at the time I made that decision. And in fairness to both parties, we should reopen this back up and go through this one more time. Make sure that we really understand what happened here.
So, um.
And, and come to a, I think, a fair, a fair decision. It may change, it may not. I'm just trying to be fair about it.
Liz, I want to ask, this is a new issue for you, and I know you don't have the history of what's going on here, so. Erin, what's your, what's your take on this particular topic?
Um, I mean, I think if we're going to, I honestly would probably need to get all the information again, because I would really need to reorient myself to everything that, uh, we discussed previously. And then, I guess, if we are gonna do this in fairness, then she will have to come back and in essence, present her information, and then we will have to make a decision. I think that's what we would have to do, if we do what Al wants to do, right?
Yeah, it's, it's what you, it's up to you.
Yeah, right, but I mean, I would have to re-educate myself, I, I honestly don't remember all the particulars at this point, so.
I don't mind reopening it, because I think she presented different alternatives, especially with the, I mean, wh- when I made that decision, I fully thought of this in terms of all summer long, and even the option of, oh, you know, one or two sessions, or whatever, three, whatever she said, was not an option at the time that I made my decision. Um, and I wasn't, you know, thinking community members, anybody else involved, but I, I don't know if I'd change either, but, but to rethink this, you know, could we do this maybe partially, and so, I mean, I don't, I think there's more options now than what I saw ahead when I first made the call. So I, I, I'd be fine entertaining at least bringing it up.
Brian?
Um, I'd be very open to entertaining the idea of, um, providing, I think she said, four dates to give her enough time to, um, coordinate an alternative, search for an alternative. Um, I think there are some circumstances that, uh, certainly warrant that with some of those email or health circumstances. Um, I certainly anticipated her to be affected by her, this decision of ours.
Mm-hmm.
That was clear evidence, she's affected by our decision. There's very few decisions that we make that there isn't someone affected. Um, so that doesn't, you know, that, that's always, doesn't feel good, but it's, it doesn't come as a, as a real, um, as a real surprise. Um, but I think it, it would be very fair for us to provide her a path so that she could continue to serve the people and do the good work she does. So, I would, I would entertain that, I think it's dangerous for us, I, I think it, I think it, it's a slippery slope um, for us to never put closure, um, because I think every decision has a stakeholder group and every, if every group knows that they really, um, they really just need to continue to plead their case, then, I mean, it, it is always hard to make that decision, because that effect is personal.
It does sound in this case, though, like.
I don't want to talk about this case tonight, Erin, just, I, I don't know what you're about to say, but I, I don't want to.
Well, may I say it?
Yes, you may.
Okay.
No, I, I don't, I don't want to spend any time on this tonight, our decision.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm like. No, all I was gonna, it was very brief, which all I was going to say was, is that along with what Brian is saying, I think that if she had known about the date, we would have been able to hear both sides of the story. So prob- by doing this, I think we will be able to just get that other piece. But I agree with Brian, and I do think that we typically have to kind of just.
We thought we were communicating.
Yes, and I think this, this is kind of a weird situation.
Unusual circumstance.
So, I, let me make a recommendation. So let me make a recommendation to the board and to the administration on this matter, then. My recommendation is, I would be willing to, what I'd like administration to do to, to Erin's point is, let's put all the facts back in what we heard before into the org notes, okay? I don't think we need any more information from Ms. Ignazowski than what she presented tonight. She gave us some information there. I am, I am not interested in spending a, a two-hour back and forth in a board meeting on this particular topic. I'd ask us, with, with the historical information, what's in the record on this, plus new information to be included here, that we just make this a, a topic for discussion for board members only, okay? And that this board then comes to its decision accordingly based on new information or, or new facts that have been presented to us. I'd also ask administration to invite the affected parties, those that were here back last fall, when, or in the wintertime, when it was, when it was brought to our attention, and, and again, Ms. Ignazowski, who was here this evening, that they know, so they, and we can open and discuss this in an open session here. They can hear what our results are, and we'll be done with it. But again, for this board, I, uh, the details should be included in our org notes, so that a lot of the facts will be stipulated. We won't go through a lot of rehashing of things that we've heard before. Come, come prepared to the next board meeting. Be fully engaged with the org notes. We'll have a, a discussion amongst ourselves and make a decision, okay? So that's, that's item number one for.
Do the, do, one question, do the org notes, typically our summaries, but do we have enough details in the org notes to, because there were a lot of statements made during the hearing.
There were, I'm just gonna attach all the information you've received, which is plentiful. I mean, you've had at least ten documents attached on this topic, so all of that past history and facts will be provided.
Okay, second topic for, for, for future board meetings is the topic of, of acknowledgement of the, from parents and/or students on the student handbook rules. This is, this is a theme that's come up a couple of different times in an executive session. I think this board is interested, Superintendent Denova, Principal Reardon, Principal Travers is understanding the procedure of how we get acknowledgements from students and/or parents, that they know what the rules and policies are, how those records are, are collected and reflected. This board has expressed its interest to me several times over that this is a topic we'd like to dive into. So if we could put that on our agenda for next May, that would be a very good thing. Anything else? Will they, Brian?
I think the timing, may need people to get an update on where things might be with the grading scale.
Correct.
And if I, if I understand that we, the board will be understanding what the decision is of administration? Is that how we will be informed what will be happening? Is that our involvement?
A recommendation?
Or will.
Well, I've had two, I've had two groups that are gonna give me input, faculty, suits. So I'll be giving you, I'll be reporting to you the outcomes of the findings based on those two stakeholder groups.
I guess I just wanna, I, I don't wanna get marbled up with overstepping the board's role in making any kind of, like, I, I just wanna make sure whoever's supposed to make these decisions makes them. You know, just because I, I may have some interest or looking to know about what's happening and so forth, I, I don't want it to, if it's not a board decision, then it shouldn't be a board decision. It's just that, you know what I mean? And then also, it, it's one of those things, I don't know if there's a way to engage anyone outside of the students. I mean, we, we're, we're kind of an inside group, so we're not a very good group to engage, but there may be others.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. And in the org notes, you, there was a highlight that is interest in the athletic training rules. We didn't have, there wasn't, I'm not sure if that, that sort of was just a hanging chat of our org notes. I don't know if that's something that we want to pick up in a future meeting, or a planning day, or.
Well, I can, I, that's fine. I can just report that Ed Hockenberry completed, I think for the fifth time in seventeen years, a panel which consisted of parents, coaches, administrators, teachers, students, himself, a review of the training rules, and for the fifth time came to agree that what we have is what we want to keep. So, anything else you want is fine. I'll just, this was just recently done, late fall, early winter. He had done that regularly, so just to give you a bit of information.
Would we expect, as a result of changing leadership in our athletic department, that these training rules would be reviewed again? Or, or, or would these rules remain, you know, for, for our new athletic director, that these would be what he or she would be administering?
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely.
Okay.
I suggest adding planning day agenda.
Planning day agenda.
Because we'll have the information by then, and probably some time to prioritize it and structure the day.
Can, can I go back to that answer?
Yes, we'll, we'll go back.
Why can only face some interviews? Okay, what, that was a question that was answered.
But the future administrator going into that role will be provided their discretion to shape the program.
Absolutely, but I mean, in terms of someone brand new, there's no grandiose plan to make wholesale changes. That's, and there will be a regular review, as I've spent on. Yeah.
Brian? Thank you. Yes, so we're back on, uh, items that should be calendared for future board meetings and a planning day agenda.
And we're gonna need some time for planning the event, the community event planning for May 28th.
There's not a lot of time.
Would it be nine days after the board?
It's not a lot of time.
Is, is part of our, what did, what did we just decide here? Is part of our meeting on May 8th for our appreciative inquiry training? Could be CARFs sometime out there.
For the event.
For event planning?
Yeah.
I would think so.
I would think that would be.
That, that is the, that's.
That's what she's trying to do that night. I think so, too.
Okay, we'll break down into sort of three groups, and then the logistics group, a questions group, and a sort of a.
And you, you have a steering team meeting tomorrow night, right?
There is, but that's, that, that group is focused, that's the lead front group, so that's the group that's focused on the next step.
Next steps.
Because we have to start to try to, we have to start to try to shape how scheduling and planning goes, and start to look for the, for the next step.
Anything else? So, here are none during the meeting. That's 9:12. Thank you for coming this evening. RETN, thank you very much.